Five o'clock on Tuesday, June 11th, and I will call to order this work session of the Flugerville City Council. On tonight's agenda, we have one discussion item that is discussion regarding the fiscal year '25 budget presentation and budget assumptions for General Fund, Flugerville Community Development Corporation, General Debt Service, and Hotel Occupancy Tax Fund. I believe Ms. Waldron and Mr. Hartsworn, it is with you tonight.
Sure, and I'll kick us off a little bit. This is the first that you will see a little bit of our FY '25 proposed budget. I can say it is the toughest budget that I've been a part of in the last six years of being here. When I say toughest, what we recognize there are competing needs and other tough items that are coming our way, whether it be through unfunded mandates of legislative, whether it be competing interest, and always compensation is in there too, in addition to a lot of capital. Today, we want to cover budget assumptions. We want to deliver a whole lot of really big projects this year, so that's going to be important in our future years of how we do that M&amp;O. And I would say lastly, that we want to stay competitive with competition, recognizing that labor is our most important resource. I will say that I have asked that we add zero new positions to this budget, and to be real frank, I've asked staff to not do new programs. This is the year that we stay steady and deliver on capital projects. This proposed budget and how a city chooses to spend its funds and to predict revenue really matters. Whenever we look at this budget, we're looking at our goal of where quality meets life. We're taking a look at our council goals and tying those into budget, et cetera. We always must demonstrate fiscal stewardship while reflecting the values of the community. I am hoping that those values are demonstrated by us advancing projects, by implementing plans, by addressing critical and emerging needs, and building resilience. It's a highly collaborative effort. Everyone that you see in this room has worked diligently on this budget. A lot of questions have been asked. I've heard that tears were shed at one point, but we're hoping that this gives you a start. What we're looking for from you as city leaders today is some feedback. We're looking towards a community for feedback as well, as we'll be posting these, and so I look forward to thoughtful conversations from the council regarding the budget. Tracy, if you'll take away.
All right. So our agenda tonight is to cover the budget timeline, the budget assumptions, the tax rates, property value, debt payments in the debt fund, sales tax, hotel occupancy tax fund, and PCDC. So just very quickly, the budget timeline, in January, obviously, we kicked off the budget. We got some feedback from council at that point as well, and here, we're sitting with you. We've met with all the departments. We've flushed out the general fund and the utility fund, and have some assumptions to bring forward to you, and we'll have several more of these work sessions as we work through this budget. So a brief review of the process, the appraisal district provides the values. We have received preliminary values in April. The governing body drafts budgets. Tax assessor calculates rates. We do have preliminary rates calculated based on those preliminary values. And then, in the future, near future, we will be publishing notices, proposing a rate for you to accept or approve, and hold public hearings on the budget and the rates. Governing body adopts a tax rate, and then the bills are mailed out. So that's the process. So going over some of the budget assumptions that we're using in this proposed budget, as the city manager stated, there are no new personnel positions added in this budget. We are assuming a 3% increase in base compensation. There are seven employee reclassifications at this point.
Can I ask a question? Is reclassification, I wanted to know, since zero new positions, does that include promotions?
So that's where the reclassifications come in.
And to be real frank, I'm not confident it's seven yet. I'm still working through some of that, but it would be very, very few, and it would have to drive a major goal of the city to do so. I wouldn't call it promotions. I would call it a change in job description.
More than seven or less than seven?
Less.
Okay.
And when we term those as reclassifications or job description, is that someone being promoted from, you know, a regular to a senior, or a junior to an advanced, or is that just completely changing someone's job?
With pay increase.
It depends. It could be a tiered system, or it could be taking a volunteer coordinator and expanding that outside of its normal scope.
And do we expect job levels to increase and that's where it...
And you're talking compensation? Slightly, yes. One of those may be a part-time to a full-time as well, so that wouldn't be a, that would be a need for whether or not we want to keep the animal shelter at its current operating hours or not. So there's some, so it varies. Out of even those seven, there's different stories. I'm still analyzing that.
You always do a good job of highlighting those specific changes whenever it pops up.
And I have one more question before we move on. Since this is for an entire year, when do you actually predict being able to create new positions based on the needs as our city is changing? Multiple years?
Can you repeat the question?
Like, when do we expect that this will change where you're able to then start hiring new personnel?
FY '26.
Thank you.
Does that still do because to lack of space, or is it part of the problem, or are we just cutting back?
To be real frank, in this conversation, it's, as she gets further through, it is the amount of money that we have to revenue and how that impacts tax rate. So this was really a conversation of funds.
Thank you.
Let me ask, this is no new personnel. Does that mean that you're expecting all departments to say the same, or there may be some decreased headcount in some departments and increased headcount in other departments, so that it's a net zero?
Do you mean current FTEs, like if they have some FTEs that aren't filled currently right now, those would still stay unfilled, or do you mean that including those FTEs that are currently in place right now?
Yes.
How about I try with, there is no reduction of budgeted FTEs regardless of filled or unfilled?
And in each department, no changes between departments? It's not an aggregate number?
It is not an aggregate.
So I'm concerned because we are moving forward with the largest capital projects we have ever had, and I want to, and we have had a chronic problem with shortages in the engineering department. I want to make sure that we have the ability to have enough people there to manage those projects as they go forward. I mean, that's, those are enormous projects, and, you know, if we have to, if we can't increase the total number of personnel for budgetary reasons, which seems entirely reasonable to me, I want to make sure that we have the ability to move people, or to move FTEs to make sure that we have those critical positions covered.
We're, currently, we're confident with the labor. I believe there may have been some misinformation to you about the number of, there's a difference of the engineering department versus engineers.
Right.
And so I feel confident, the staff feels confident. It's not like they asked for a whole lot of people and didn't do it. We're able to carry those projects through with that and staff augmentation. And when we get through the engineering budget, we can get into those weeds.
Okay, thank you.
We're also looking at a 15% increase in health insurance, and we won't actually have those final numbers for the RFP for the health insurance till well into the fall. So we will have to go ahead and set this budget, not really knowing that final RFQ response, RFP response.
How many dollars is that? 15% increase?
It equates to $560,000 in the general fund.
Okay.
Our total spends about four and a half million.
So if it's only 3%, then it's $100,000, but if it's 15%, it's $500,000?
I think that, I think 15% is reasonable. I don't think it's conservative. I also don't think it's shooting too high. I think it's probably gonna, it's probably gonna be that much of an increase.
Okay.
And emergency medical services, obviously, the 1.3 million has been placed in the budget. We've also continued our plan to convert our fleet to leased fleet, and so I believe this is the third or fourth year that we are turning that fleet over into leased. So there is an increase that comes with that. At some point, when we get the entire fleet converted over, it'll start flattening out, but right now, we're still, we're still climbing, and so this budget has that increased amount in it as well.
All right, and could you remind me on the vehicle leases, my recollection, and then what I heard, I think maybe last year conflicted, can we carry those as capital expenses on the debt service fund, or are those leases coming out of our M&amp;O?
It should be operating. It should come out of the operating.
So then why would we continue with leases instead of purchasing vehicles? Purchasing, I would imagine, could be carried on debt?
If you issued bonds for them, if you paid for them out of fund balance, they would not be considered debt.
Still out of debt.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And this will eventually be, when you start turning over these leases, that's when you really start seeing the effects of...
Exactly.
It seemed like we did a cost comparison between purchasing and leasing when we made that decision, and in the long term, leasing proved to be fiscally more responsible.
We literally have this, I feel like I have the...
Yeah.
I must be misremembering because I remember it...
I think it was placed in the debt fund, but it really belonged in that.
So it was placed there, and that was part of the strategy, but apparently it was inappropriate? Gotcha. All right. Thank you.
Some other things, some other things that you'll see when you get the proposed budget is, we've created divisions within the police department, and it's such a large budget, all of it landing in just a few lines. We've created divisions that make sense for them, and so I think you're gonna see, with as many personnel that they have now, their personnel is divided up into divisions, and so it's gonna be an easier budget to read.
Do we have any legislative risks with our police department budget?
I believe so. We also pulled out the GIS department. It was formerly in the planning department, but we, it's got quite a few employees itself, and so we felt like it was necessary to go ahead and pull it out as a separate division. And we've created a public work services division that combines the efforts on the capital improvement plan that serves general fund and utility fund. There is, we're looking at the cost allocation adjustment from the utility fund. We're making sure that we've entered a reduction of that allocation to general fund, and we're continuing to look at what that allocation's gonna look like. And so basically, that is the services that general fund provides to the utility fund. We're also looking at some city utility accounts that have previously been non-billed to the utility fund, and we're looking at what that number is and billing the general fund for those utilities.
Can you go away on that?
I'm sorry?
Your vernacular is very interesting, so I can...
So there are, there are water accounts within the city that are not billed at this point.
If city hall pays for water, city hall should pay for the water, not the utility account as the end user.
So we're making that transition.
And that's more transparent and...
And so the non-bills are the governmental entities?
Yes.
The original fund.
So when our parks department waters the grass, they're not paying the water, the utility fund for that, and they probably should be.
Correct.
Yeah, I ran into that with a certain city that brags about their fountains.
And we've learned that various cities do this for various reasons. This is the most...
It's one way to put it. I just, I hate to...
This budget also includes, so there's been several five-year equipment agreements that the police department has brought forward to y'all, and we have had to put those, put that expense in the annual budget, because even though it's a, it's a year-over-year, it's paid out annually, and the expense has to hit annually as well. And then this budget also focuses on a target of 35% reserve in the fund balance. I have had a conversation with our financial advisor, and it is recommended that we keep a 30% to 35% reserve because of our debt that we have, and so...
What's our current reserve level?
I'm sorry?
Our current reserve level?
I think we're at about 42, so we have some ability within this budget to draw it down a little bit.
All right.
Well, I think years like this are the reason why we have it at 42.
And I do want to go back to the, I apologize, Tracy, just because some of this is new, and I've been with y'all six years doing this. So for example, I'm gonna use the police department at the beginning to better our transparency. What you've seen in the past years is the police department's budget all on, and combined. What you'll see different is CID's separate from records, separate from patrols, separate, and that is a transparency. What will be unfortunate in the first year of that growing pain of making that more transparent is the comparison year-over-year from the previous years. So as we go through this budget process, there'll be times that you see no information in the prior year. It is there, and we found a way to combine it. So that may be a frustration that you see, same with just moving divisions or creating. We hope to do it right this year, and then we're building on that for better transparency.
So what was the impetus for that?
Transparency, 100%.
But you've been here for six years, what changed?
Well, I would say ability for our managers that manage those cost centers to better able to budget. For example, you put an entire minor tools line item in PD, and it's like, who uses what, who's pulling it, and how do you, you better, when I think about a budget, it's not just numbers. It's about what do you value in a city? Where do you put your money? How do you, how do you show the community what's important to you? So should it be code enforcement is more than this, or more than this? And whenever you start breaking down budgets, you're not only showing transparency, you're also helping those managers better plan and figure out which of those budgets should be expending or not.
So what was the breaking point? Because obviously, it happened because there's an impetus for everything that happens. So something, some situation occurred where...
I have the right people on the bus that know how to do this, and that has been really helpful for them to understand how budget isn't easy, to be real frank. Most of my department heads have never sat through a master's class on how to do a budget, right? And so this is something, it's a learning opportunity for our department has been able to do that, and I really do believe if you put office supplies in the police department, and I don't know how many, I don't know the cost, it's better for us to break it down to be able to manage it, and for transparency, have the people in the right place that can do it.
So it's about the police chief being able to delegate budget responsibilities to each department, the sub-department head, and that way, he spends less time on budgeting, and the people who need the equipment have more direct input into the budget decision.
I agree that, and I'll just add on to that, they have ownership of their budget at a closer level.
Why did we pick the 35% reserve as opposed to 32, 30?
I thought you said the expert.
It's a target, yeah.
Well, the expert said 30 to 35, so...
Wouldn't you want to be more concerned?
I want to know.
Our bond, our bond ratings.
She picked that number.
Bond ratings advise that.
I mean, I called in and talked to him about the 35%, and he felt like that was a reasonable, reasonable target to shoot for because of our bond debt.
Okay, because our bond debt is so high, because we're doing all this capital improvement, we're building so much water and wastewater, roads, new city hall, all of these things.
We didn't have as much that we probably could get away with high 20s, and our rating would not have been affected, but because of it, we have to protect our rating.
Okay, so if we weren't building all of this, if we weren't building the new raw water line, if we weren't building the new water wastewater project, we could have a lower percentage.
Yeah, this is general fund. I just want to make sure we stay on general fund, but we have tons of transportation projects, and we have general fund debt, that we have to protect that rating.
The fact that we're building out Kelly Lane is part of the reasons why we need a 35% instead of a 30%?
Correct.
Right, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
All right, so we're switching gears, talk about tax rate. So definition makes it sound real easy, you know, no new revenue rate is the rate that would provide the same amount of revenue in the prior year on properties taxed in both years. This is the definition.
That definition just always confuses me, because properties in the last year, does that account for new improvements on existing properties?
And let's be clear, who came up with that definition? You can say that loud.
So we have, we have the legislature.
The legislature.
The legislature, and we have several slides on talking about the no new revenue.
I've just always been curious, if I build a pool in the backyard, then it's a new improvement, it's new property that didn't exist the year before, but it's on the same property that existed the year before, does that count?
I'm pretty sure that new improvements are new construction, not just an improvement on an existing construction. And those are not factored into the no new revenue rate, any new improvements. So this slide, the next slide, yet again, makes it look real easy. Prior year's taxes divided by current value of property times 100, that gives you the no new revenue. Well, as you'll see in the next slide, there's factors that go into the calculation for the no new revenue rate calculation. One of them is litigation settled, and we had a significant amount of litigation settled, and we'll go over some of those numbers in a few slides from here. New exemptions, either full or partial.
Partial's a new thing.
So new exemptions, full new exemptions are public property, religion, those type of properties, but partial exemption could be disability for vet, disability over 65. There's even a solar exemption, so I mean, we have a significant amount of new exemptions as well to consider.
I believe in 2022, they also implemented, used to be, to get the homestead exemption, it had to be a full year of ownership, but now a partial year qualifies for a homestead.
I think they can apply at any time during the year.
You can apply at any time during the year. And when you say the new exemptions, and you said that we have a...
On the exemptions program.
I guess you said significant, but what do you mean by significant?
In a future slide, we're gonna go over the actual dollars for all of these.
Okay.
I'm just kind of defining them right now.
Because, you know, it's relative, and that's why I think to myself, it plays into the role.
It's millions.
It plays into the role.
Yeah, it factors in. And then we also have a new SB2 circuit breaker legislation that went into effect this year, and it was actually pretty significant as well. It is on, it applies a 20% taxable value cap placed on all real property that is exempt from homestead, so it's not the same properties at homestead, it's different properties. And it's applied universally, so there's really no application. It's a limitation, just like a homestead.
Does that apply to real property or also personal property?
Um...
I'm curious about inventory.
It's business, personal property as well.
Okay, so inventory property as well, okay.
And so I reached out to our tax, our central TCAD, our Travis Central Appraisal District. 22,000 eligible properties for this limitation. We have 349 with the limitation, and so that just means that of the 22,000, none of them reached that 20% or over, so they weren't capped. But, you know, something to keep an eye on.
And just like you said, that's new legislation, though.
Yes.
Which will have significant ramifications for cities and counties and school districts, ESDs already, else the downline.
The average limitation on a property is around 112,000. So not really to get in the numbers, but to show the epicness of the no new revenue calculation, because it's not as simple as the table we talked about earlier. It's actually quite complicated, so, but this actually factors in if you compare tax year '23 with tax year '24. Normally, I would anticipate the no new revenue rate continuing to go down as valuations go up. That's what we've seen in the past, so when it didn't do that this year, I dug in a little bit harder to make sure that we understood exactly what these numbers were. So you'll start seeing on the '23 side, the current taxable value with the litigation settlement, which was over a billion in litigation settlement. And then you have the 23 million exemption change, and you get down to the bottom, and year-over-year comparison, which is what the no new revenue rate does, is actually raising it from 2401, which was our no new revenue last year, to 2634 this year.
So Tracy, just to be clear for the public, so when you talk about litigation, you're talking about people who challenge their property tax.
Took us to court.
And not, and not, and not, that's not coming from us.
No.
That's coming from, and it's not necessarily even coming from the average citizen, it's usually major corporations and, let's say, businesses that are challenging these things. So consequently, when people, I want to be clear, when people look at that, they're gonna think, well, wait, no, we should be a challenger appraisal, right? That's fine, we're not talking about that. We're talking about major corporations who are doing that, where in fact, they can challenge and they can actually go ahead and get one value for the same property in Abilene as it is in Travis County, which makes absolutely no sense, but as you see, there's real-world consequences to what's happening with that.
Yeah, this is beyond just protesting and settling, yeah. Any questions about this before we move on?
Oh, there's a lot, because, I mean, just like you said, people would normally think, okay, if I'm having a no new revenue rate, then why is it going up?
Right.
And again, this is nothing that the city has done. We have not come up with this new computation. There's nothing that's come up from that that we've done to effectuate what this is, but given the formula that we're demanded by the legislature to enact, this is what's coming up for those values over there.
Right.
And it, and just like you said, that should be a continued trend in the future. That's not something that should be a one-off, but given limitations and necessities of litigation, everything else, we have an expectation that will continue to go that way.
We'll still get blamed.
I have a question about the asterisk on tax year 2024. That indicates that 75% of the appraised taxable value is being protested. My recollection is that in the past years, that number is somewhere in the under 20.
So what that means is not what you're saying, what that means is, of the protested amounts, it was 525 million, I'm using 75% of that value in these calculations. I'm not using 100% because I would never want to use 100%.
So the appraised taxable value is somewhere in the neighborhood of 16 billion, and you're operating under the assumption of 75% of that?
I'm just using 75% of the under protest, which is only 525 million.
Ah, 75% of the value is under protest.
Just the under protest, yes.
Okay, so what's the total number? And why did you pick 75%?
I try to be conservative. I looked back at the last couple of years, and the certified roll came in about 88% last year when we got our certified values, so I choose to be conservative at the preliminary and wait for the certified roll and see what it ends up happening. So it's a conservative estimate.
Okay.
Based on just my historical, the way I like to step out with the preliminaries.
And Tracy, has that 88% been consistent on those lines that you've seen?
It was a little higher the year before that, but then it went down, so we may land somewhere around 85 or 90.
But it's better to be surprised, Chris, if you find out you have no TV or video game system or anything else like that.
Than lose something, yeah.
Okay.
We would rather balance the budget at a...
Okay, thank you.
So, as you know, the, the voter approval rate really is simple math. It's really the no new revenue times three and a half percent. So, so we do the math on that. The next slide shows our tax rate and just a little bit of history. And, and this, this table does show that M and O, you know, consistently coming down year over year. And now all of a sudden, it's popping up a little bit. And our projections, the INS rate, we are, we're, we're drawing that back down just a little bit.
And Tracy, again, just to reiterate with people, you have seen M and O going down, that pops up a little bit. But again, the computations and the actual mathematical equations that were used the prior years aren't the same ones being used this year.
Yeah, if you don't have that kind of litigation that's been settled, or if you, those numbers are what changes that no new revenue.
And that's just really important for people to.
Yeah.
Understand why, because they're going to be like, dude, what are you talking about?
Yeah, and we really have no control of those values. So the overall rate that we're looking at is just slightly above our total tax rate from last year. And the value that we would be calculating to come up with the revenue is the eleven and a half billion is the value that we would use. And so that value is different from the prior slides because we do get to include the new improvements when we actually calculate our revenue. So this just looks at it a little differently. These are some of the values. So it's a fifty-one million decrease in potential taxable value that has to do with the circuit breaker that was provided by the appraisal district. One point two billion decrease in value resulting from litigations. Thirty, twenty-three million new exemptions. And then the value of our new improvements was two hundred and forty-six million, sixty-three percent of that was residential.
We do want to start in the future, the importance of that really is we want to start showing the commercial versus residential and growth to start watching those trend lines and see how they're doing. So I want to keep this going for years.
Yeah, I mean, this table is very informative. It shows that residential is growing at a little bit of a higher climb than our commercial. But our commercial is starting to go up now.
And that last line there gets to Doug's question about new improvements. Now, when we're talking about new improvements in, in residential, what that's talking about is going from farmland to a house. It's not, that's not a house to a remodeled house with, where they've added an enclosed porch or a pool. That's, that would not be captured as a new improvement, right?
Wasn't on the property, I mean, wasn't on the, the values the year before. Now it's new on the values, yes. So not just an increase in valuation because you added or remodeled.
You're correct.
So an increase in, because of a remodel doesn't show up on that last line?
Correct.
It's just building a house where there was farmland before. Okay, thank you.
Which is why it doesn't have to be a part of the no new revenue calculation.
What if you, if you added a, a mother-in-law house on a lot you already had, would that, would that be?
I would have to call the appraisal district and ask them, ask them that. I've always been under the assumption that it's, it's new, that it's, it's, it's something that's, wasn't on there before and now it's new, like new construction.
So a, a, a separate building would be new construction would be.
I would have to confirm that with them to see if that was part of that.
It should be. We, we have to assume that the appraisal district is sophisticated enough to calculate that. They provide us these numbers, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
They have drones all through the neighborhoods, just checking.
Yes.
Or they have.
Or no building permits.
So this gives you a snippet of the homestead valuation comparison between twenty-three and twenty-four. Average taxable went up from three forty-two to three sixty-six. Median taxable did not have the twenty twenty-three number, but for twenty twenty-four is three hundred and seventy-five, almost three hundred and seventy-six thousand.
Why didn't it have a, I'm assuming it didn't have a number in twenty twenty-two either, right?
Do we? We likely have it. I apologize. It was more finding it.
Yeah, I didn't have it from the appraisal district.
No, it wasn't from the appraisal district. We calculate, yeah. It was very close, just like these.
It was very close, yeah.
Oh, one twenty-three. And then the average exemption changed a little bit. I did run a city portion based on the tax rate that we've talked about tonight. In twenty twenty-three, eighteen hundred, it goes up to about nineteen seventy-five, total increase of a hundred and thirty-eight dollars.
And that includes exemptions that we, we made last year too as well, correct?
It includes what?
The exemptions.
Where we increased our exemptions.
Yeah.
Yeah, the average taxable would have included the exemptions, yeah. So property tax revenue, what we're looking at for this budget, this just gives you a snapshot of fiscal twenty-four adopted. The asterisk means that we pulled out the TERS revenue that was actually included in the adopted numbers. But we wanted to make sure we were comparing apples to apples. So the projected number for twenty twenty-four is the twenty-six million fifteen thousand. And so with the new taxable value and the new rate that we're talking about with the no new at twenty-six, it brings in thirty million to twelve. It's about an increase of four point two million.
So to be clear, the, the original, what we adopted included the TERS revenue, that's why you have a twenty-six thirty-three. This is what are projected, which does not include the TERS number.
Correct.
And then consequently, what we're proposing does or does not include.
It would not include the TERS. Their revenue goes to their fund.
And you're saying that twenty twenty-five proposed is based on the no new revenue rate or the voter approved rate?
It's based on the no new revenue rate.
But the delta in the additional revenue that we're actually seeing there is due to the INS.
Yes, well, it's due to the taxable value that we're able to apply that rate to.
This is just M and O.
M and O.
This is the INS side. This is why we started talking about these things in June.
So I guess that confused me then, because my expectation is that the no new revenue rate, the amount of money we collect is, is the same. But I, so what's, the, the delta is reflecting new property added?
It, we, we do get to claim the new property when we apply the rate, yes.
We're showing a, a four million dollar increase and the new property value is only two thirty-seven at fifty cents. That's only going to add a million dollars, not four million dollars.
So it's, it's, it's not as, it's more going back to that no new revenue calculation and how we get to the no new revenue rate. Because we, they call it a loss in value whenever we lose value to litigation, lose value to new exemptions. And so in order to compare same property year over year, you have to factor in those losses, which made our no new revenue rate go up.
That's, that's.
Our taxable value has gone up. Also, our no new revenue rate has gone up because of those factors.
And, and that's the, and that's the part I would, I would find out a very quick blurb, you know, sentence or two to explain to the people. But it's like, that's the key part. When you told me about that, that's the part that blew my mind. It's like, wait, what do you mean?
It's very hard.
A loss right there as well. So that's, that's a key part that we've got to figure out how to message to people because it, it's not intuitive by any stretch of the imagination.
No. So on the INS side, it, it is just strictly the taxable value times the rate. And the rate is going down a little bit. But as you can see, our twenty-four adopted budget was just slightly over three million. We expect to bring in just a little bit over what we budgeted. And the proposed is about one point five million over the twenty-four. And so all of this gets factored into how, how we calculate the INS. Right now, we're lowering that rate a little bit by applying some of our fund balance that we have available. There's about ten million dollars in that, in that fund available.
So, and, you know, maybe this is a question, I just realized we haven't had our lobbyist here in a while. But more for the lobbyists than you. But given that, what happened with that loss of revenue because of that loss of value because of litigation and the exemptions that have happened with that, do we believe that was the, that was intentional by the legislature to have that computation turn out that way? Or are we seeing that as something that just by happenstance occurred with that? Because I, I don't, I don't think anyone could have been, well, it's not true. I'm not going to say anyone couldn't have anticipated. But I find it highly unlikely people would have anticipated that would be the result, particularly if you're trying to. And this is where we have a conversation about what are you doing to lower people's property taxes? I guess helping with the relief being, being done right now isn't in the end really giving them relief because of things like that.
Right, yeah. It's a very complicated calculation.
Are you asking the witness to read the mind of the witness?
I can see his face, he's like. I, I think, I think, I think the big part is this, is that we need to convey to people specifically that the proposed tax cuts that were made for property taxes, tax cut rates, in fact, did not result in reducing taxes, but in fact, reduced in raising taxes from that. And that's, and that computation, that result is one of the key bones of witnesses, you know, evidence to show that to be the case. Which I don't personally think that they thought it would turn out that way, but it did, and we're here, and it's going to suck for everybody.
I do want to, I want to applaud Tracy too and a lot of other staff members. She spent a lot of time, a lot of days, weeks, months, really digging into the CIP and looking at the rate, working with, with Dusty, our FA. And really saying, do we, what, what rate do we really, really need? And being realistic about our CIP to, to drive that rate down a little bit to try to offset what we're seeing on the, on the M and O side.
And that's why we've got to be careful when, when you're talking to the legislature about playing with that calculation. Because, you know, we, we've been under three point five for.
Four years.
Four years?
Yeah.
Four years now, right there, you know, and, you know. There's little cons, yeah, there's consequences, there's little consequence. This is a perfect year example of that consequence.
So the next slide goes into the debt service fund and the debt payments. And so I have received from the financial advisor. So if we were to issue what the CIP, the twenty-five through twenty-nine plan that was presented to y'all not very long ago, and so you kind of know the epicness of our CIP program. These are actually laying out the future debt that was in that, that CIP plan. And as you can see, with the twenty-seven and a half rate, we stay fairly flat for twenty-five and twenty-six. And twenty-seven and twenty-eight jump up quite a bit. And so I think that as we look at this and as we work through the five-year debt service forecast, we need to just consider, and we'll continue to look at those projects, look at the timing of those projects. The twenty-eight would not have covered fiscal twenty-seven, so we would be looking at a rate increase either way. And so, you know, that's a consideration when we get out to those years.
Can you go back to, Tristan's the one who has the, the, the projection between residential and commercial, that bar graph? So, but here's the problem, right? Is that for us to be able to go ahead and give some tax relief, we need to have the infrastructure in place to have more commercial growth to make sure that we're able to go and take up that tax relief. But if we're not able to do that, then it actually has the base of what you're saying regarding that.
Yeah.
And so we're building out all this infrastructure, which is necessary because, in, in fact, if we want or need to be able to go ahead and have more commercial, more commercial value, to have, you know, to be able to go ahead and have the development that it needs, we need to have the infrastructure in place before it happens. But as you're saying, in, you know, your slide, that, well, that debt starts to get to a point where we're going to have to be very selective about what projects are and how we're actually bidding out and dealing with that debt moving forward. So it doesn't be such an onerous burden on our citizens as they're, as, as we're doing this for them. Because they're going to see a bunch of nice stuff in the next two to three years, like it's going to come online. I mean, that's the thing that I always liked about when Doug talks about is like, okay, listen, if we're saying we're going to bond for something, we need to have in that time period because people need to see that we're doing it. It's going to happen the next two to three years. They're going to see a bunch of nice stuff that's out there. But because of the new computations that have come to the legislature, which may need to talk to the legislative committee about looking at that formula, we're getting to a point where we're being fiscally responsible financially, but we're not able to go ahead and support the things that we need for the Texas miracle, for that commercial growth to actually occur and keep going with it.
Yeah.
Luckily, we don't get blamed for everything, so that's cool.
Some of it will be, what I have found with the CIP is because you look at it every year, it continues to kind of inform itself. And so I have a feeling that it will, it'll slowly slope itself just because we review it every year. I mean, because the further out you get with your CIP, those numbers are, are projections. And so.
So, so let me, let me ask you this about the CIP.
We just have to keep looking at this every year.
This is my, my annual frustration, right? Is that, and, and as Rudy was saying, as we, as we issue debt, we need to be delivering those projects. And one of the things that has seemed to happen in the past is, you know, in the budget, we'll expect to spend this money, expect to issue this debt, expect to build that project, but it, it gets delayed and it gets delayed into the next budget year. How many, how many items do we expect are being shifted from this year into twenty-five?
Well, that's a good, that is a good question. That's a great question.
Projections are very serious with our departments these days.
Nobody's saying.
And so, no, but that's part of projecting is getting it done in the timeframe by which we're supposed to do it. So I don't know if I have a list, but I, I don't believe that statement to be as true as it was in previous years. So I pride ourselves on, we're not putting things in the budget and holding money for something that's not going to happen. I think we've been better at fine tuning that. There may be some one-offs and hopefully that are way out of our control. But we, we're not just putting things in the budget hoping to get around to it. We're, we're actually scheduling that.
And, and I know you tilt, I mean, like Kelly, right? Like, I mean, I, I come to enough, enough commercial, people doing it in the business are saying, yes. You know, when it comes to actually moving, you know, AT and T lines, all those sort of things, that's like the worst part of those things. Like, we, we get that. I completely understand that. I just would like to see, I think it's interesting in the Friday update that you get to see what projects are shifting, just to see about that. And then we have that conversation for that. No one's doubting that there's not a intent to actually get the projects done as they can. And there's some exterior issues that may come about from it. But if we're, if we're going to be, if we're going to talk to our citizens about, hey, listen, we're at a point right now where we've got to tighten our belts and everything else over here as well. And you're not going to like what's going to happen from a tax rate standpoint, but you're getting the stuff that we need to help develop the city as it grows. We need to make sure that we're shoveling that out there for that.
Agreed.
So nobody, but nobody's casting saying, hey, no, you're not doing your job. It's just that, it's like Doug said, hey, we got this. I don't want this sign to say from twenty twenty and we're still twenty twenty-five.
I'm not denying that it didn't happen in the past. That's what I am saying. It's.
Effective.
No, it did happen. I am saying it happened in the past. I'm agreeing with you.
Absolutely. No, disappointment is unmet expectations. So.
Absolutely.
Let's, let's control either what we build or what we expect to be built.
I will say from a CIP perspective, there is, there is a lot of CIP projects that we've started this year. So I, I see the CIP and the expenses of the bonds being spent down. And they've been very aggressive this year getting all of those projects off, off and running.
That's why I'm interested to see what all this rain is going to do. Well, we're not like Dallas or Houston, right? But, but how that's going, yeah, how that's going to affect projects.
So switching our hats to sales tax, fiscal twenty-four approved. Right at about a little over nineteen million, we're projected to come in very close to that.
That's a pretty good projection.
Skill, right?
I would take the credit, but I'm not a part of that. But the proposed is estimated at 3% over that projection. And so, that's what we have.
Why, yeah, why, we're really very
Why 3%?
Yeah, what are we seeing?
We were seeing 2.9 year over year, and so, I was being very careful and conservative. The last time I pulled it up, we were, we had actually hopped up to about 4.3, but I still think 3% is pretty conservative. And you don't want to over-project, and if you under-project a little bit, that money goes into fund balance, it's spent on one-time expenditures, but you want to be pretty close to what you think it's going to be.
So, I have to ask, are we seeing building permits of structures that are going to support additional sales tax revenue? Are we comparing it to, to what's coming?
Um, we should, yes.
We should.
Yes. And I, I need to do a better job of like getting that information so that I can project to see if there's anything that's going to be a, a significant sales tax producer. At this point, I know of apartment complexes and
All I know, we saw probably the, the biggest one this year would be Hobby Lobby.
Yeah.
I imagine that's going to lift us a little bit.
Yeah. I've, I've seen their revenue, it's, it's, it's good.
I'm really happy to see that our projections on our approved are tracking very closely. I am suspicious of 3%. That strikes me, given the macroeconomic climate as perhaps excessively optimistic, I would like to see what it looks like at a 1.5 or a 2% projected increase, because I don't want to be in the situation where we projected more money than we have and we're having to make cuts halfway through the year.
I had it at 2, we moved it to 3, but it was, it was because what we were seeing year over year, and it did increase a little bit. The projection that you're seeing in 24 was a 4% over projected 23 numbers. So, we're, we're coming in at our, our 4% of last year.
And you're talking about a swing of a few hundred thousand dollars in a $30 million budget.
The 2% is a swing of how many hundred thousand dollars?
It's on a couple hundred.
So, 3% there is a difference of about 500,000, 525,000? So, you'd be shaving a couple hundred thousand.
I'd like to see if we can shave a couple hundred thousand.
Is this projecting the new HEB that will be going in?
Um, it is not, but you're probably going to see a division between the two sports as well.
All, all prepared food is taxed.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, I'm sorry, Tracy, what did you say?
I said that you're probably going to see a little bit of a stop going here, going to the new one, but yes, it probably will bring a little
And that might account for the 3%, I think. Yeah.
And we switch over to talk about hotel occupancy tax. So, just a review of the two-step on HOT, heads and beds intends to fund projects that attract tourism, expenditures must fit into one of the nine categories that we're about to go over. This is governed by the Texas Local Government Code, Section 351. So, the nine categories, as you see on the screen, convention and visitor center funding, administrative costs of convention, go down the list. We see a lot in the promotion of arts, so that's one category. We've seen some historical restoration, certain expenditures of promoting sporting events, signage, transportation systems for tourists, and upgrading of sports facilities and fields. So, the HOT budget for this year includes a lot of these things that we've listed here, public art, economic incentives, promotion and marketing, tourism vehicle, tourism training, memberships for tourism organizations, and short-term rental software that we have implemented, are implementing this year.
I think we've given more thought to HOT tax this year than any other year before. Like, we're seeing that revenue because we're starting to get over that cap of our Marriott Agreement. So, there's more dollars to spend, and we're fortunate to have a communications team that's led by somebody with extensive experience in that realm. And with the, with the reclass in May, we have somebody brought on board that's going to be dedicated to this effort, and we'll be kind of shepherding a lot of the, the funds within this. And of course, Aaron, doing a lot of the, the public art that you're seeing around town. There's a limit to how much you can spend, 15% of that that you can spend on public art, and we're really maximizing that. But a lot of the other teams you see, and you may have noticed, if you haven't already followed the Explore Flugerville page, there's your plug, but they're getting really active on social media and taking out ads and so forth, so pretty excited to see what they're doing.
How does this relate to Airbnbs that are in the city?
Yeah, so we, I, I got an update on that a couple of weeks ago. So, our GIS team is leading that, it's heavy on that. There's, there's a lot of integration between our GIS maps and that particular software. I might have to phone a friend on when, when exactly we expect to be getting, getting revenue from that, but basically what that, what that system will allow us to do is identify those, those properties that are listed but are not paying, or we're not receiving HOT funds from.
Can you give me a round number about how many are currently paying HOT tax?
Oh.
Oh, it's
On the short-term rental?
It's probably less than 20. It's not, it's not very
I think my question was exactly, because the number has changed, I'm sure, over the years, how many, how many homes have actually been identified? Yeah, that's really what I really want to ask.
I'll, I'll get it, I'll get exact numbers.
Thanks.
My, my vague recollection from when we brought this last time, it was, it was significant. The revenue was significant, that's, that's out there not being collected.
Yeah, but I, yeah, that's, yes. And so, do we see that there are more Airbnbs? Is, is the number increasing?
Oh, okay. That's like, are we trending, are we seeing more and more Airbnbs being listed in Flugerville?
Right.
That, that's a great question. I, I don't have the answer to that.
And that software should be able to tell us.
Oh, yeah, yeah, it'll, it'll, it'll identify Airbnb, VRBO, you know, all the, all the publicly listed
I mean, and I, I feel like they kind of go together too, as we do this Explore Flugerville, we also want to have places that people want to come and stay. So, yeah.
My recollection is that the, the number was 89. That's the description I've had. Is that about, about right?
Yeah, with the, with hundreds, a couple hundred more, I think, at least, that were identified.
Do you think we can identify a couple?
I think there, I think there was a lot that were not.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good.
Just not reporting.
Good, let's make sure we get everybody paying their fair share.
That's right. Serena, are you reporting?
So, this is just to give you an idea, year over year, we started out fiscal 24 with 985,000 of fund balance in this fund, projecting 1.2 in revenue, the economic incentive payment always kind of off the top. We budgeted 250,000, which was pretty much for, I think, the chamber agreement. And so, as we go into 25, we're carrying over more of a fund balance, increasing the revenue just slightly, just for trending, economic incentive is the same, and so, we're increasing the operating and adding a capital item. But we're still ending the year at almost 1.6 million in fund balance, so.
So, what's the projected capital outlet? What's that for?
It's for a tourism vehicle they requested.
Okay.
Is he, is it a hot dog shake?
I don't think so.
Did a truck to
It'll be wrapped, it'll be a van.
Deutschenfest trailer around or?
It's a trailer, but it's a van, I think.
So, so this will be a, this will be, you know, so as we're, as this fund balance, so, let me start. As we went through the budget process, we're also recognizing that we were trying to utilize these funds as best as we could and as often as we could because they're specialized. And so, to the degree that we had things that could only be funded by HOT, we wanted to utilize those funds, like the Heritage House, that museum, that, that's an eligible expense, for example. We pulled that off of M and O, put it on the HOT. So, we're looking at all these different little, little things, so a part of that increase is due to that. But there needs to be a conversation and, and kind of policy direction to talk about, like, what's your long-term vision for the use of HOT funds? Is this a save-up for a, a huge project? Is it a bigger piece of art? Is it something related to downtown east? Or is it a bigger vision for tourism and marketing in general? So, at some point, this is, this is a, this will be a broader, more detailed discussion with council to seek your vision for the use of funds.
Nate David, good coffee. Okay, he's about to go. No?
These are just some of the highlights that are coming out of the PCDC budget, sales tax revenue, we're making sure that we're, we're projecting the same in both of their budget with our budget, they're at 3% increase over their fiscal 24 projections, 500,000 for land acquisition and development, 500,000 for retail infrastructure. There's two capital projects, impactway extension phase four at 5.3 million, and road improvement projects at 1.9 million. And that takes us to what we have to look forward to. Another workshop in July where we will be focusing on the utility fund and, and fees. We'll be bringing back the fee schedule. In August, we'll deliver the proposed budget, vote on proposed tax rate, and set the public hearings. In September, we'll adopt a budget tax rate, master fee schedule, and ratify the tax rate.
And of course, once you get more information, you can adjust accordingly, so that's important with that. So, that's 75% you have now, maybe you adjusted.
Yes.
I, I think that, at least from, from my purposes, be able to articulate a narrative and to folks and better understand what's occurring with that. Obviously, you're going to let us know what that value is in real dollars for each household, you know, another 100, 150 dollars this year, something like that. That's important. But again, I'm going to reiterate this, I'm going to keep saying this, we've got to convey what happened here is not of our own function or, or misapplication of funds, or not being fiscally responsible, but in fact, and that's why I'm saying like, this may be a contribution for legislative committee, I, I just, I just do not believe legislature intended for this to happen, but this is the real world consequences of this, and we need to articulate how that came about and why that's having the ramifications it is now. Because it's just not going to make sense to people. People are going to be like, what are you talking about? You lost this volume and should be going down.
Right.
What are you doing?
I was going to jump back to the, the HOT budget. We just talked about, in the general fund, I believe, keeping a 35% reserve. I'm looking at the HOT, I see a 100% reserve. Why are we not spending the full amount, full projected amount for FY '25?
And if I may, you may have an opportunity next month, I'm going to bring back the historic water tower, for example, as a project. I know what Round Rock paid for it six years, seven, eight years ago. That could be one that uses that fund balance. We just hadn't identified, or have we set a philosophy with council, identified that big, like he said, that big project, your historical water tower may, and you could do that this year. So, we didn't, we didn't show expenses for using that fund balance. I'd like to hear y'all's philosophy about keeping it. I have my recommendation, which will be to use that. Those are for people staying in hotels, that's not property tax. It's not typically from our residents that are, that are putting that into the, the revenue, so use that for quality of life and tourism items. You may have an opportunity in the next month to, to spend some of that.
I believe that's our last slide.
You don't have another slide that asks us if we have questions?
Any questions?
That was it.
Any questions?
Anything else, any other questions, council? All right, I do really appreciate it, Ms. Waldron, Mr. Hartsworn, thank you for the very thorough presentation and for kicking us off this budget season. That'll take us to item 2B on our agenda, that is an executive session item, that is deliberation regarding real property pursuant to chapter 551.072 of the Texas Government Code regarding the purchase, exchange, lease, and/or value of real property relating to real estate proposal for downtown east. We are in executive session. We are in executive session.
We need two.
He went to go get one more.
All right. Ladies and gentlemen, it's 6:32, we are back from executive session. No action was taken. That brings us to the end of our work session agenda. We will reconvene in our regular session at 7 o'clock. Meeting adjourned.
Two minutes off.